And Tom, why don't you come up and join us and we'll keep this flowing. Tom told me in looking at me when he first walked in that he thought this was a target on my head.
(laughing).
Thanks, Tom.
Reggie just joined in quick.
Yes.
Hi Reggie. Thanks for joining. We just heard a great presentation by Mike Adnizio and we're just getting ready to start with Tom White.
Don't hang back up.
Thank you, Mike. I had the privilege of witnessing our colleague Kathleen Strauss receive the Wade McCree Award from the Federal Bar Association here in Detroit. And Attorney General Holder spoke and said very nice things about the work that Kathy is doing on the State Board of Education.
Great.
Thank you.
Excellent. Tom, please.
Yeah, before I start, I do want to say one thing about Lynn John Dahl because he is, you referred to him as one of your heroes and he's one of my heroes. I changed my hair color just to become unlike him. But, and this is a true story, when, when he ran in that brief run for governor, in whatever year that was, Lynn, that was the first time I had ever opened up my own personal checkbook and written a check to somebody in a primary for the governor. So he, I have done it since then. He kind of, he sort of opened the floodwork, floodgates, but...
Did it bounce, Lynn?
Yeah. And he didn't, he didn't win, so maybe, maybe, you know, neither the other person...
He had the thinking person's vote.
Yeah, he got the thinking person's vote, exactly. I'm very pleased that you invited me to be here today. I'm with a group called SOS, which is Save Our Students, Save Our Schools, and Save Our States. And the, and the documents you have, there's a listing of the organizations that are part of SOS, so you might have to kind of page, page back there a little bit, but you'll see it, the SOS member organizations. We are, it's very noteworthy and important for the purposes of my discussion to note that we are largely a school employee group. We are school administrators to a large degree, the superintendents, the elementary school principals, the high school principals, so on down the line. We also have the MPTSA and the High School Athletic Association, as well as the School Board Association. And I guess the angle that we, the view from which we see things right now is kind of long-term and short-term. So I'll address it in that context. Short-term, we face, in my mind, the most dire situation we face, certainly in the times that I've been involved in school funding, and that has been a while, as you, as you know. When, when Mike was talking about fund balances, I wanted to touch on that just a bit because fund balances did go up and it was a tribute to the school business officials. I always said that they were able to bring them up, but they went up because, in a large, to a large degree, because when we switched from the old Burzley formula to the Proposal A system, they changed the funding cycle for schools and they, instead of getting 12 equal payments, we got 11 payments. So the wisdom of the auditors and such was, you need to have a fund balance equivalent of one month's, of one month's bills in order to make it through without having to borrow. So the objective set by the auditors and by the school business officials I was working for at the time was to have a 15% fund balance in order to do that on a statewide basis. So that, that way you could avoid borrowing and that was the, the part of the predication of that. But as you saw, the fund balances are going down. And indeed, that's kind of part of the short-term story here when you go on the, for the, for the years after Mike was able to display for you. The, the bottom line right now is, we, we're facing cuts potentially. If the governor's proposal is not accepted, and we know it's very controversial and a difficult sell right now, we hope people will get on board with it. But we're, we're looking at somewhere in the, in the neighborhood of $250 per pupil cut. They were talking 268 after the consensus revenue conference. Now they're saying, well, $250 per pupil being cut. On top of that, there, there is, we've already been told that the retirement factor is going to increase by 2.4 percentage points. So it'd go from 16.94 where it is currently, up to about 19.4. So two and a half percentage points, or 2.4 percentage points. That costs roughly $150 per pupil on average across the state. So you put those two pieces together and just looking at the low end, we're saying $250 per pupil cut if, if the legislature doesn't do something, if they do nothing. We have that 250. On top of that, we have increasing costs of $150 per pupil, so to just round it up or just add it up, that's $400 per pupil that we will not be able to spend in the classroom in the traditional sense that we spent last year. So our expenses are going up and our revenues are going down. To put that in context, in June, as of June 30th, 2009, so this is at the end of last fiscal year, there were 80 school districts in the state that had a fund balance of less than $400 per pupil. So we looked at the data and we said, okay, well, you know, what's, what does this all mean? Put the fund balance into a per pupil basis and say, there's 80 districts, June 30 of 2009, that if, if all things being equal, they'd have to spend their entire fund balance to stay even with the educational program that they have right now. Just, and not giving pay increases, not increasing compensation for, for healthcare and things like that. We know the number's worse because that was as of June 30, 2009, and of course, we took a reduction of $165 per pupil this year in a lot of districts, and we'll know the numbers pretty shortly because we're doing a survey, a lot of districts are eating into their fund balance this year. So I'm kind of painting a dreary picture here, but it's actually a good case, dreary picture of the situation we face in the short-term. And we all know the economics of Michigan are really very devastating and difficult. So as we look at the situation and we look at, look at the, you know, the problems with the retirement system, the problems with funding in Michigan, the problems of the economy in Michigan, we feel that, that it takes from our view what we would view as a balanced approach to resolve this. Part of that is sacrifice. Everybody needs to sacrifice some in order to help us get through this situation. I often talk about my dad and when he, you know, when, you know, you hear your dad telling all these stories as you grow up, he went through World War, excuse me, he went through the depression. After he got done with the depression, guess what? He was drafted in the Army, married my mom, went away four weeks later and was gone for four years. Had three children in the meantime. No. But, but that, that was a sacrifice. You know, they sacrificed through the depression, they sacrificed through World War II, they sacrificed after the war in order for us to have a better society, a better economy. And, and really, I think that, you know, this situation calls for similar sacrifice and it, it's noteworthy that we are mostly school employee groups because a part of our agenda is sacrifice on the part of the individual school employees we represent. Because we stand for some things that not everybody will agree with in the school community, which is, we believe that, that we need to belly up to the bar and, and we need, as school employees, to pay more for health insurance costs. We know that the Kaiser Foundation does a study every year and says basically that in the private sector, full family coverage, employees pay an average of 27% of the premium. In schools, I would guess that figure is probably more like 5% or less. So we're saying, in, as an element of fairness and an element of kind of sharing the pain with our private sector supporters who, who financially support schools, we think it's fair. We don't like it. When I go out and talk to administrator groups and we discuss this and I say, how do you feel about this? They go, I don't like it, but I understand why we need to do it. So that's part of what we're talking about is that sacrifice and saying, yes, there's a bill. I mean, the good news is, hey, there's legislation on most of these things I'm going to talk about already in place. There's a bill in place to require mandatory premium sharing. We would be supportive of that legislation. Likewise, we're supportive of looking at the, the healthcare pooling, but to be honest with you, I look at that as being a long-term sort of a thing and, and I think it has less, it has, it doesn't have the certainty of a premium sharing approach. So premium sharing is something we support as a group of school employees. The second thing that we support that's a bit controversial within the school community is we support greater financial contribution by school employees into the retirement system. You know, the governor came up with a proposal that I, I have to give her high marks for in terms of saying, everybody's saying, why don't you do something bold, Governor? Let's do, let's think big and do bold things. She did something very bold here. Do we agree with every little element of it? No. But do we agree with the general principle of it? Yes. You know, and we would like to support the governor's proposal, work within the governor's proposal to, to refine it in, in the ways that we think are necessary to do. But there, there are different ways to approach the, the retirement system and, you know, her, her proposal is certainly a good starting point for talking about it and figuring out what to do. Before her proposal came out, we had basically said, you know, we can solve this if we put a cap on what school districts have to pay at the 16.94 that we currently pay and just say, cap our, cap our contribution and then let employees pick up anything beyond that. You know, that's another way to approach it, has its pluses and minuses. But the bottom line is, we've got to get a hold of those costs and that we believe that employees are going to have to share a greater portion of that. The figure that Mike was talking about earlier, just as an aside, on the retirement, by the way, the pension side isn't quite fully actuarially funded, but it's close. And that's, I think, what you were referring to, but the, the more frightening part of that is the healthcare side because it's, it's pay-as-you-go. It's an unfunded liability of approximately $15 billion. So it's huge what that is into the future. And that's why the governor's proposal, when she's eliminating dental and vision for future retirees, is significant because without doing that, we, we're looking at $15 billion and that's a figure that I picked up a few years ago. So it's a huge thing. So that's part of the, part of the sacrifice that we need to make. We have a number of other proposals and I don't, I don't want to, I don't know, how much time have I got? Am I pretty much using it up?
Make the points you want, but some may come out in questions too, Tom.
Okay, all right. I'll just, I'll just hit a few other highlights. On one of the sheets here, we have given what we'd consider just a number of ideas that we say, you know, for the, the listing on, on the front of the news release we had. Just, here are things that we need to be looking at. Some of them I've already identified as things we need to be doing. Other, other pieces are things that we say, these are, these are items that should be on the table for discussion. The other part to this for us is, schools need to get engaged in what we'd call self-help, both in terms of collective bargaining. We need to do a better job at the bargaining table as managers. We recognize that and we're, we're taking efforts to do that. We're also working with Michigan Association of School Administrators. The MAS A has a lead forward project that is, that is on how do we improve education in Michigan? So at the same time, we're, we're looking at the, the issues of, of the financial side. We are also working on a more long-term effort to say, you know, just because the, the school funding situation is so dismal, difficult, and even negative, we still have to worry about educating kids and we still need to look for better ways to educate kids at a lower cost. So we're focusing on, how do we educate kids with less resources? Not that we want to, but that's just what we see as our reality. We've got to do both things. We've got to look for ways that we can become more efficient. And as I talk with some school groups and people say, well, how are we going to, you know, maintain teacher salaries and get, keep good people in the classroom? My answer is productivity. You know, I don't see, when you look at the numbers and Mike didn't go out for the, you know, the 10-year projection, but when, and I know you've probably all seen them, it looks pretty, pretty tough for me, at least a decade, in that if we're going to be sustaining people's jobs in schools and we're going to be giving people pay increases, it's going to require that we increase the productivity of schools. And we're engaged in a, a variety of efforts along those lines as well. Finally, on the, on the, on the revenue side, we think clearly, there's no question, you know, that if we, if we talk politics versus, you know, policy or passion, policy and passion say positively that more money for education is, is justified. We've gone from being about the eighth highest funded in the nation, say, 12 years ago, about 15 years ago in Prop A passed, we were the 12th highest funded for K-12 in the nation. We're now 20th. So other states are investing in education while Michigan's been disinvesting in education. So it's absolutely justified. It's justified for kids because we know for kids that getting an education simply means a better life and it means more income for that kid. It's absolutely justified on that level. It's justified on a state level because education equals economic development and it's, good educational systems bring, bring businesses to the state. If you flip that around for a moment and go back to where I started with this and you say, well, what would, what are we going to look like to the rest of the country if instead of having 30 or 40, it's, the number for the most recent year is 45, I think, if you count charter schools that are in deficit, and we're starting to call that bankruptcy so people get a better grasp of what it means. But say there's 30 traditional K-12 schools that are in that situation right now, that number could double, it could triple, it could quadruple over the next three years, over the next two years. And how does Michigan look to the rest of the country if you're looking to set up a business? If you say, well, yeah, they're doing, they're, they're okay, they got low taxes, but there's 120 districts that are bankrupt and we don't know if, if, you know, we're going to have an educated workforce. So I think lots of reasons additional revenues are justified. But at the very least, in the short-term, in the very least in the short-term, we need to, we need to make some changes. And again, you know, a lot of these pieces are in place. The notion that the governor put forward of the shift to sales tax on services was also put forward by the Michigan business leaders, makes a great deal of sense to us. We're, we're supportive of it and, and it's, but it needs to be done quickly. And, and you know, that's the, the urgency that I bring this message with and I think April is a good time for you to complete and get your, get your product onto the legislature because it's so easy to see a situation in which nothing happens and which politics prevail and, and positioning, you know, kind of political positioning prevail and nothing gets done. And the picture that I painted you before is the picture of if nothing gets done. So we're supportive of that in the short-term and that, but it's still a short-term measure. In the long-term, we are, have supported a study by the Citizens Research Council, CRC, to look at every aspect of education. We, we pitched a lot of legislators on this and asked them to go with us or do it with us, offered to take the money out of the school ADAC to do this study. For reasons I won't go into here unless anybody asks me, they didn't want to do it. So we've commissioned the study from CRC. We don't control CRC. Anybody who knows CRC knows they're an honest broker of information. We're putting school governance, we're putting the, the structure of the way schools are set up in the state and the consolidation, collaboration issues, everything's on the table for us within this study. And we want to use that study then for a resolution of a long, of a, a long-term solution, you know, to, to the, to Michigan's, both the financial side and the, the question of, how do you educate kids now? How, you know, instead of an, you know, a 1900s agrarian type of a system, how should we be doing this in the 21st century? So we've got a lot of things that we're, we're working on and in particular with the, the CRC part, that's something where we're saying, we're commissioning this study and then we're reaching out to everybody, to the business community and, and to folks like you, to, to work together and say, let's use this as a common basis for understanding what's going on and common sharing of data of what, what, what's happening to our system in Michigan and build with it from there. Thank you.
As we get ready for questions, may I just on behalf of our deficit elimination staff, say something that I, by the way, I know Tom agrees with or we've had discussions about. But, but the thinking about bankruptcy, if I could just mention for a minute, since we deal with the districts that come in, we, we would, we would acknowledge this terminology for that for some districts. A recent district that came in and said it was bankrupt, so I'd be cautious on how we can, how we maybe use the language, pays in the top 5% for its superintendent, for its teachers and everything. So we think it's hard to describe that as a bankrupt district if everything stays equal as opposed to, let's say, a bottom 5% pay. And this is something I know the whole community's struggling with, but they're certainly two different, they both could on paper be technically bankrupt. One is paying, in one case, I'm thinking of literally double the amount for a superintendent and for a teacher than they are in this other part of the state. And it's just, it's wordsmithing and Tom, as, as I said, has taught me a lot about that, those nuances. So I don't mean to, I just wanted us to think about it because our deficit elimination folks who are looking in on this right now are going, they're not all bankrupt, trust me, they're not all bankrupt.
No, and you know that's, that's, that's a term for helping the public understand because when you call on a deficit district, people go, okay, so what?
Yeah, no, I, we understand that point. I think Cassandra's first then, Liz, please.
Well, I actually had a couple of questions, but just following up on that, I'm just curious, you know, there's just, I mean, there is disparity in pay. Would this group be interested or talk about having kind of like standardized pay?
There's not a, we haven't taken a position on that as, as a collaborative, but there is a, a significant amount of interest in that, on kind of, I mean, there are a lot of difficulties with it. It's not an easy thing to say, you know, a regionalized pay scale.
Right.
Not, because once, one scale for the whole state doesn't work, you can do it regionalized. My understanding is that there's more than, I was told this just last week, that 20, I think like 24, 25 states have some sort of a salary schedule and that, but they do permit variation on it. You know, it'll be, here's the state, here's the state scale and then they allow variation on it within, let's say, counties. But it's, it's done on a county-wide basis or on a, on a larger scale basis. And there's a lot of appeal to that.
Okay. That actually wasn't my question, that was just in relation to his. But my question, it has to do with the sinking funds.
Mm-hmm.
I've heard a lot about this, that they, you know, there seems to be a movement to try to expand on what those can be used for. And I see it's in here.
Yes.
Can you talk a little more about those and what the opposition might be to that?
The opposition, it's much like what Dr. Adnizio mentioned because frankly, the, the sinking fund and as, as we, the opposition to it is people who say, schools will use it just to raise taxes. And, and it's basically, you know, we, we have strong opposition from the State Chamber of Commerce, I think, on that basis, saying, we think you will misuse this. The counterpoint to that is, of course, it's voted. People get to decide whether or not they want to, to do it. And so you say, you know, to an organization that sort of says, you know, the best government's at the closest level to the people, well, here's a situation where we'd like to be permitted to ask people for, for, you know, if they're willing to pay more to support their schools. Frankly, I think that the sinking fund is fairly limited in what you can do with it in comparison with what Dr. Adnizio was talking about, which is to say, let every school district in the state have up to three mills. And I'd agree with them in terms of, again, you know, money is an issue, but having that is equalized. Because the other argument against the sinking fund is the one that Mike raised earlier of saying, well, you're going to, you're going to expand the gap between the higher spending and lower spending district because property wealthy districts will be able to raise more money on a single mill than a, than a poor district. So if you're not equalizing it, that definitely happens. But, but in any event, there's, it comes down to, you know, do we trust the people in the school districts to make these choices? And we do.
Thank you.
Did you have another question, Cassandra?
Um, no, that's it for now, I'll come back.
Liz?
Okay. I was just wondering, you know, I know that a lot of people in our state have been looking at all these different models and, and making recommendations. Recently, there was a, a graph in the paper that showed the highest performing states in terms of academic achievement and the fact that those same 10 states are also the highest performing in economic standards. I wondered if any of the folks that are talking are looking at, how do those states fund those high academic programs and, you know, what are the differences? I know we have Proposal A and it's a constitutional amendment and the limit's what we can do. But maybe there are some ideas in, in these other states.
Well, I can't say that I know anybody who's looked at, at, looked at it in terms of the funding side of, you know, well, Minnesota is, is a high-performing state educationally as well as, you know, economically.
And a high tax state.
And a high tax state, yeah. So I think, but, but the answer, simple answer to your question is, I'm not aware of anybody who's kind of looked at that combination, that combination of factors.
There might be some little pearls in there.
It's an interesting question, but yeah, they have tended to be the higher tax states, the ones that I'm familiar with and with maybe North Dakota, and South Dakota being an exception to that, I think they're up there too. And they're pretty low tax states.
Reggie or Mary Ann, did you have any question for Tom?
No, thank you.
I, I had a comment and a question.
Oh, I did.
Go ahead, Mary Ann.
I'm sorry, I was on mute and I...
Okay.
Um, I've, if, if you could just explain a little bit more on what you meant by the need to increase soda activity?
Well, you know, I, I would like to be specific if I could, but it's really looking at it from kind of an economic viewpoint of saying, how are we going to save jobs and how are we going to give people pay increases in a, in an environment where our funding is essentially flat? And the, so it's a generic answer of saying productivity. You could increase productivity in a school district by, obviously, the straightforward way of saying, well, you increase class size, you know, which you could maybe do at the high school level without affecting programs. It, it might be the use of technology to teach kids, you know, and I've been doing some kind of, some of the community sessions with parents and kids and you go in and you talk to them and even take the money aspect out of it and you say to kids, what would you like school to look like? And what they invariably come back around to is, well, there are some classes where I need to be sitting there and I need to have a teacher there and there are other classes that I love to take online. Well, online is less expensive, so, you know, it increases, it increases productivity in that sense. So it's looking at those different kinds of measures, some of them that are, you know, kind of, I won't say easy, but some of those that like the, the use of technology where kids are already embracing it, they're already doing it, and then others that are more difficult in terms of saying, more, more kids in a classroom or something.
Do you know what that beep is? Kathy joining us?
Oh, I think so.
Anyway, Tom, first, I want to applaud your, your personal commitment to education. I know you continue to play key roles in helping us advance this.
Thank you.
And also, I think the approach that your organizations, that you're speaking on behalf of today, you know, where it's both shared sacrifice and acknowledging that we've got some serious big changes to make and reforms, along with making the argument that important investments in education do matter to our long-term prosperity.
You could do my job, John, that was a good synopsis.
That kind of balanced approach, I hope, is what we all can get our arms around and begin to name and embrace as what, some version of that that we can move forward. But you referenced, and then Mike referenced this, a bit of, in some quarters nostalgia for the good old, bad old days of proposal, pre-Proposal A because the property tax was more stable. And, you know, expanding that property tax enhancement opportunity. I was talking to someone yesterday who was saying, if anything, perhaps with the bottom falling out of the real estate values, the sales tax and other things as we move ahead, assuming the economy picks up, may be in fact more lucrative or beneficial than going back to a property tax, putting aside the inequity enhancement opportunities that it might bring. You, you all don't take a position on this property tax enhancement, or do you in here?
Well, we do in the, in the, in the, in the terms of the sinking fund. And I can say that if, if, thank you, Mike. If, I think if my members were asked the question, you know, would you support a three-mill enhancement, three-mills enhancement that could be voted on locally? I think the answer would be, yeah, we, there would, there would be support for that. That being said, I agree with your premise and that, I'll say about Proposal A and, and those of us who were around and involved with it, you know, are fewer and fewer. It was a big improvement over the Burzley formula. It was a big improvement over what we had before, both in terms of equity, in terms of stability, and, and, and every which way. So even though it's not the best, it was a significant improvement. So the, but the three mills, that's just auxiliary. We need something far more central and that's why we say for the short-term, we support the notion of sales tax on services that'll stabilize the state budget, that'll stabilize the school budget, and in the end, you know, my understanding is that with the business leaders, that will also give us business tax reductions in the end. So we, we do support that, but beyond that, that's not going to be the long-term solution to funding schools in Michigan. That kind of plugs the hole that's in the boat and keeps us from sinking and then we have to get about, about, you know, the, the reconstruction of education and the reconstruction of our funding system.
Nancy, please.
Um, Tom, and this may ask, it'd be asking you to recall your previous position for this answer, but do you, do you know if there are any studies out there at all that talk about how infrastructure needs of schools are going to play into the future in, in terms of funding and how we address that? And that three-mill enhancement is not probably going to do that. And that's where everybody always looked at these sinking funds.
Right.
Is structural needs.
Right. Well, I'm not aware of any studies, but I'm glad you mentioned it just because when I talked with Doug Roberts about, you know, everything that's going on, he said, you know, when you, when you guys get into this and there's going to be an opportunity somewhere along the line, you know, this all crashes and burns and we fix it or we fix it in a more thoughtful way. He said, please go back and work on the issue of infrastructure because it was intentionally left out of the Proposal A debate because it was too controversial to, to put in the mix at that time. So, I mean, the, the infrastructure issues and the inequities in infrastructure between school districts in the state are massive.
Yes.
I mean, beyond comprehen, it's like, you know, in some little school district like Ashley, that every mill raises like $30,000 per pupil. And if you go to a, you know, a, a well-to-do district in southeastern Michigan, it's, every mill raises like $3 million a student. So there are huge inequity and in a little So they're huge inequity. And in a little district like Ashley, they can't even pass enough millage to build a new high school. So huge inequities.
We should read into the record, you know, on the 10th anniversary of Proposal A, we did have David Olmstead and Doug Roberts team up on this study, on this topic. And their basic, we have the report.
Yeah.
And it basically says, looking ahead, we did, infrastructure is a piece of educating the kids unattended to. So we should have a recipe that basically says, 10% of the cost of educating a kid needs to be available for infrastructure.
And that leads me to my next question that I was going to ask, is that if, if in fact, we can agree that that's a huge issue, and it sounds to me like we can, it also brings to mind a question, too. Are there, are there basic essential percentages, elements that have percentages within a, we have to have these percentages of funding for just a basic school district to survive. Is there any kind of?
I'm not sure I'm following your question, Nancy.
Well, and it's probably because I'm not asking it correctly, but you have to have people.
Right.
You have to have infrastructure. Well, even if the infrastructure is technology, that's an infrastructure. Because I know where you're going on.
Very good, very good.
It's still, it's still an infrastructure. You have to have some kind of curriculum.
Right.
Whether it's ethereal, or it's something that I'm picking up and looking at.
And you need a mascot, and you need sloppy jokes.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But what I'm saying is, I think sometimes that we, and I'm going to back up a minute. I can remember when we, when I sat in a local board, people wanted us to really look at how we were delivering education, what we were delivering, and how we were making strides towards the upcoming new century. And we had to be really honest with them that, at least in our district, we had 13% of our disposable funds that we could do all of that in. And with 13% of a budget, it's difficult to really get away outside the box without addressing that other 87%.
Right.
And so I'm just wondering, is there any study that you're aware of that talks about the kinds of essential percentages you have to have in order to run a district? Or is that just pie in the sky?
I haven't seen anything like that. The closest thing is really, and it doesn't, it's benchmarks, but not without, without sort of being directed.
All kinds of caveats?
Well, no, you have the Bulletin 1014 data that actually is, I mean, it's a really good data set. The department does a great job with this. And we're actually taking that data set and making it available to our members with a little calculator on it so that they can do a comparison, how they compare with other districts. It doesn't get down to the, to the level of specificity that you're discussing there. But there's a, you know, the department's done a very good job of providing that data. School districts haven't used it much, but that's part of our effort, is to say, hey, we have to all look at what we're doing and how we're doing it. And so we're starting with the 10, the Bulletin 1014 data and saying, how do you compare? There's always reasons for differences, though. And that's, the general answer to you is, you know, it's really different in detour than it is in Detroit, than it is in Duwajik. So that it's hard to put, you know, a finger on, on those kinds of percentages.
I think, though, that one thing we have to keep in mind, though, too, is that even though the, I love, I love the notion that if you're in Tuskegee, party or pay is...
View of the bay is half the pay, right.
But I will tell you that there are districts that don't have that bay to you.
Right.
And it may be hard, it actually costs more to get a teacher in those districts than it does in Detroit, or it does in Grand Rapids, or something else, because of where they are. And so I think that's, I guess that's what I was trying to get at, was that there really isn't a set percentage.
No.
And I keep hearing people wanting to make those little marks in the sand, you know, and say, well, you need this percentage of this, and this percentage of this. I just don't...
You can look at benchmarks and you, but then it does, it takes a lot of caveats and you have, so it's, it's hard to come up with that, that kind of number.
Just to add to that piece, I think our waivers for seat time are going to help us inform what an infrastructure should look like. Because the downside, if this had been done in 94, or even 10 years later, is I don't think we could have anticipated how different this is going to be five years from now, not to mention what it is now. Universities, I think, are still even coming to grips with this idea that, you know, if you have whole universities, controversy aside, that are all online, and then even traditional universities, like my daughter went to State, and my son who went to Michigan, and one went to Notre Dame, and they all had online courses, and sat in their room often to take the online course, not in a classroom. So you wonder, you know, will these, maybe being insensitive to say this, but some, we're trying to make a point that be careful about building Taj Mahal high schools to last for 60 years, because that's not likely what the system's going to look like, and is even already not looking like. So I think it's really a, almost a new question in terms of the infrastructure, as you already both said, you know, what, what is the impact of the cyber stuff going to have on that? And it'll be big.
I think, I think that just as Proposal A and schools of choice created new definitions for what a community was, I think that as we go forward into this technology and online world, it's going to, it's going to redefine what infrastructure looks like. And I guess that's what I was kind of getting at, because we know that the cost of that technology-rich environment has a, has an infrastructure cost that we have not so far encountered or embraced. But it's going to be a cost nonetheless. And, and the last part of this whole thing that I was getting around to was, because of that, are we going to have to kind of look at, or maybe it's not just because of that, but certainly that's an addition, it's an, it's an augmenter. Are we going to have to look at things beyond Proposal A, such as Headley?
We're so far away from Headley. I mean, on a local level, looking at Headley, yeah, that, one of our proposals is, hey, switch the 18 mills over to the state side so that we no longer have to deal with Headley.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I need to hear some of that today.
Headley is the limit on how much of our revenue or tax.
Yeah, it's on a local level, too, because it's, you're, I won't go into explaining it. I don't even, Mike could do it better than I could. But, but it's, so it's, I mean, there's, it has an effect on your local millage rate, too, because you're, if, if your property values go up by more than the rate of inflation, then your millage rate goes down. So we started off at 18 mills, and I'm on a, on a board, we're now at 17 and a half, because, you know, our property values went up for a while, so.
But it goes beyond...
So it's both local and it's on the state level.
It goes beyond that, though, too. Because Headley also restricts, in some cases allows and others, on how you finance your debt. And that's something that has become a real process, and will become a real process, for places like charter schools and online schools that have debt, but don't have a traditional way of looking at it. And, and Headley has an effect on that. And so that's one of the reasons I asked that.
Thank you. Rob, and then anyone on the phone, and then we'll move to Lynn.
Thanks. I had a question about the CRC study. When are they anticipating the release of the findings of that, first of all?
They are putting it out in incremental pieces. They've released the governor, governance section first, about two weeks ago. I believe the finance piece is going to come out in April, I think. So they're, they've got, I'd be, and I'll forward this to Mike, they've got a, kind of an index or table of contents that is pretty impressive of everything they're going to do. So that, so the next piece, is my understanding, is the finance piece. And I think, you know, by the end of this, it may be completed by the end of this year, that was their objective. I'm not sure if they're on track to complete it by the end of this year or not.
And I wasn't clear on the answer of something else. Are they doing a comparative analysis of the different states?
No.
Or not?
Well, there, I think, I should, I should back up. I don't know for sure. It's, that's not the specific purpose of it. I think it's very, I think it's possible that they'll look within it to look at other states, but I, but that was not, that's not one of the purposes of it. I'd anticipate, hard not to do a little bit of that as you, as you get through, you're looking at something like a finance system, hard not to look at other states. But I agree with what Mike Anisio said, you know, any, any funding system, and I've spent time looking at them, any funding system works if you have enough money behind it. The Burzley formula worked if you had enough money behind it. Prop A works if you've got the tax system behind it. So we can look at other systems, but it fundamentally comes down to, well, how many dollars have you got?
I was thinking more in terms of the structure, because you were talking in terms of the governance and structure.
Yeah, oh, I see.
Of districts and whatnot. And with the work that I'm doing with all these other states, I'm amazed at the differences.
Fairness, mhm.
Yeah, it really is amazing how you go from one state and there's just a handful of large districts throughout the state.
Right, like North Carolina or something, you know, they use countywide systems and...
Yeah.
Mary Ann or Reggie?
Thanks.
We got him.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
I'm fine.
Okay, cool.
Again, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And Lynn, please join us. Thanks for, for your patience.
Excuse me. Thank you. I'm delighted to be here. I'm going to go back and get my water. I appreciate the generous introductory comments. And I certainly would hate to see anybody interrupted if you wanted to go on in that...
Not everyone's made requisite Lindtong doll.
The, I really, in a sense, I envy, but I, another sense, I don't, the task that you are involved in. I think it's terribly critical that you provide us with some, some leadership on resolving some of these questions. And from, from my perspective, and I think from the perspective of the organization, I represent a better Michigan future, the Coalition, we're clear there has to develop some kind of consensus around a leadership proposal. And you're in as good a position as any to be a party to that and, and help give some direction. Let me say a couple of things, just by way of introduction. The Michigan Prospect brought together the legislators in the House who did the original negotiations on Proposal A. And we hired Mike and Doug Drake to answer 33 questions for us, that we said, we had questions because here's what we thought we were doing in '93, '94, and look at the situation now. And, and they wrote a volume, which is, is available on the website, and we can get you hard copies if that's of, of interest to you. But it's at michiganprospect.org, then click on education, it will take you to that. Michigan Prospect spelled out. The, let me say, too, that there's some assumptions behind what I want to talk with you about today. One of the assumptions that clearly the three of us share is that we're in a fiscal crisis, and I think that's what, what brings you to this issue. And I'll do some highlighting of that again as we, as we get into this. Another assumption that we have is that schools are but one, public service under, under assault, because of that fiscal situation. There's, there's a widespread anti-government, anti-public-service climate that, that we live in that is, is changing much of the nature of the discussion that, that we're having. And a lot of indication that, that people have anger about public services, yes, not so much maybe public services, but the institutions of government and some of the outdoors in that. But our assumption is no public service stands alone. I was looking last week for, back at the Jefferson Center study that, that you guys did, Mike, when you were down at Wayne Resa. We were looking in Proposal A for what was the common, the correlate between student achievement and what?
Funding.
And, and that's, that study you did at that time with the, the schools in, in Wayne County, pointed to a correlate between student achievement and essentially household income. You, you looked at the students who are on reduced or free lunch programs, those were the ones, greater number, with the lowest student achievement. And there've been many studies along those lines. But it's not education alone. I mean, ultimately, what happens in the classroom is, is pretty, pretty basic. But again, the hungry kid who comes to school, or the kid who can't stay awake, or whatever, is, is a real factor. We also assume that the problem is neither government nor funding formulas. In case of education, the problem is not Proposal A. I would agree with, with what Mike had said earlier. The problem is really adequate, fair, stable funding. Now, Proposal A should be changed, it probably should be changed annually. But let me remind you that pre-Proposal A was not a property tax-based system. Pre-Proposal A was a system without 80% of the funding. Do you remember that? Maybe only for a year and a half or so. But it was in a context in which the property tax had been eliminated for 80% of our spending on, on schools, for, you know, school operating. So it was not a starting point. And when people say, I wish we could go back to pre-Proposal A, I think it's important to remember that for some reasons, largely political, that had to do with rising assessments, as well as, as property taxes and so on, the property tax had been eliminated for, for school operating. You know, so it's, it's not, that's part of what we have to think of when we talk about a formula, when we talk about, you know, how do we respond to today? And many of the things you've talked about prior to my, my being here today, points to how we constantly need to go back and look at what the context is today, as we're trying to tweak. Had we gone to property tax, stayed with them? Had we gone to the income tax, as some of us proposed? Had we gone to the sales tax? As Mike pointed out earlier, they've all tanked, and, since that, since that time. Proposal A, I'm not defensive about it, because, you know, what we thought we were doing was dealing with the givens at the moment. And that's what people need to do now, is, is deal with the givens at the moment. Another assumption is that we've got both a short-term and a long-term crisis that we have to deal with. I just looked again, I hadn't seen that, that one slide of Mike that shows the student population, you know, that, and it tells a lot of the story, if, in, in terms of both short-term and long-term. If you're talking about long-term cost of education, that long-term looks a lot different from when we thought schools were going to grow in numbers and, and so on, as, as many of us did. Someone has to challenge the political realists. The political realists are the people like me who constantly say, well, we got to deal with the givens. We now have been, in this state, and certainly across the country, put in a position where we are now debating survival. If you don't force us, or somebody doesn't force us, to deal with what education should be, then it ain't going to happen, because we realists don't deal with that. We deal with, how do you deal with what you got? I find it pretty hard to argue that Rob and his colleagues will be performing a better teaching job if they don't have dental care or optical care, or if, if they have a larger classroom, or if there is no preschool that prepares those kids that get, I mean, that doesn't make sense to me, that that results in a better education system. So, you know, I think somebody's got to take the offensive, and, and you ought to be part of that, I think, you know, to, to say, okay, there is a, an optimal program. Now, you don't have to be irrelevant to the discussion, but, but as we sit and talk about, how do we get through this year? We've got to have somebody constantly goading us to say, this year ain't that good, you know, in terms of salvaging what we, what we have at, at the moment. Let me, let me turn to the PowerPoint. And I thank, I mean, Hamilton for helping us get that set up as well. The Coalition on the back page of your sheet is, is an identification of who, who we are. And I did something wrong already. Maybe if I turned it over here. Okay. All right. Just talking about the current problem, and this is stuff you know, and you know it pretty well. You know, we had aggressive tax cuts in the '90s. We had a multi-year tax cut on the income tax, started in '99. The cuts continued as we went into a recession. The domestic share of the auto industry is in freefall. We raided cookie jobs. You were talking earlier, I think, about pensions and the trust funds. There was a time when we had, you know, substantial funds in reserve for the public school employee retirement, but all that got into budget balancing and got spent in that way. It's one of the stories about how do you have a balanced budget when you don't have a balanced budget, you know? That's what we did. We used those reserves and so on. This seems to me to be one of the most important graphs as we tell our story about where we are today. And it's the story of what's happened to median income and how we compare to other states. When I was in the legislature back many, many, many years ago, we were among the top three states in terms of personal income. Alaska, California, and Michigan were always the three states with the highest cap of personal income. We're there on the right now. We're about, we think next year we may strike 40th in terms of our comparison with other states. So we do have a unique phenomenon. Median income declines below the national average, and middle-income families and low-income disproportionately pay more of their disposable income in taxes and fees. Also contributing to our decline is the longest job loss in Michigan history. Since 2000, we've lost in this state over half a million jobs. And Fiscal Agency, House Fiscal, said they expect that there'll be about 278,000 jobs, 278,000, that we will lose in 2009 when the figures are in. So it's in that context, that economic context, that we're carrying on our discussion. I think this is a fascinating slide because it demonstrates the percentage of family income paid in taxes for each income bracket. If you start on the left-hand side, you see incomes up to 15,000. And you'll see that the tax that hits those folks hardest is the sales tax. You'll see, if you go then to the $365,000 income, people in my category on the right, you'll see there the, where the impact becomes greatest in terms of sales, income, and property taxes. This is important as you look at what it is you want to talk about and propose, and how you want to make changes in our tax structure, because it does matter who it applies to. Overall, the people of Michigan, back in the '70s, paid 11 and something percent of their income in taxes, state and local taxes. Overall, today, that number has dropped to somewhere in the 10% level. So essentially, as a percent of our income, we have seen taxes drop. Now, the shift, as you can see, depending on which kind of tax varies, depending on where you fit into the family income picture. This is a general fund picture. I'll jump over that because Michael has shown you that in his presentation. This looks at essentially the Headley Proposal, the tax policy and our constitutional limit. You can see how far we are graphically below the Headley limit. And this is a tribute to a decline in personal income, but it's only one factor. We're about $9 billion below that cap now, as Tom and Mike have both pointed to. But we've also dropped taxes. We've had a lot of tax breaks over the past several years as a real factor in this. You know this, Lynn, of what we've done already, as we've talked about what's happened to Michigan quality of life. It's interesting that if you go back to 2000, inflation-adjusted general fund, general purpose revenue is down 42.5%. So if you talk about general fund, general purpose. During that same period, inflation-adjusted school aid fund revenue is down 13.5%, significantly less than overall, which is a tribute to a number of things. Part of it earmarking of education funds. Part of it, almost nobody runs for and holds office as an opponent of education. It's a very rare candidate, or successful candidate, who does that. But I point that out to say, one of the reasons why I said in the assumptions is that we're in this together, we get a lot of pushback to a proposal that looks like it favors education versus, fill in the blank, healthcare, human services of some kind, so on. So as you do the plotting and scheming that you're going to do, I think it's important to recognize that there are people out there who are feeling very much that they too are in a deep trouble, and they look for allies, not opponents. I chair the Board of the Michigan League for Human Services, and we constantly are reading and hearing the reports that the way in which we could fund, promise scholarships or fund some other program would be if we limited that growth in the level of earned income tax credit. And so we're saying, "Wait, wait, wait. That's not something we're real excited about." But we get into these battles that I think are important to keep in mind. The, let's turn to, what have we done with state government? This just shows you a number of employees there on the right-hand side over the past, since '73. So we've lost 78 to, through 21% of our state employees, just in the last, well, since 2000, 17%. Interesting because the perception people have is that our starting point is today on all of these discussions. And we really have done some things by way of reducing the size of government. You also look at expenditure growth. Michigan has had, since 2001, the smallest growth in state expenditures of any state in the Union. You almost never hear about that, and that's not the assumption that people carry. And yet, it's very vital to our conversation because these two graphs, both in terms of public employment and in terms of our growth, suggest that we're taking seriously the survivor strategy of trying to reduce the demands for funds and services. Obviously, this all translates into what happens to services, and they're failing fast. And this is, you've seen that, those figures before. So what do we propose to do about it? What we proposed is a number of things. One of them is that we look at government contracts. The general fund of the state is a little over $8 billion right now. The state has private contracts that account for nearly twice that, about $15 billion, 35% of the state budget. We would suggest these ought to be as critically reviewed as the expenditure budget. Now, many of these things we're not going to argue with. I mean, a lot of it's Medicaid, for example, and so on. They were going to say, "Yeah, we do this through, you know, various private contractors" and so on. But we're talking a lot about people's salaries, people's benefits, and so on. Well, let's talk about our efficiency with our contracts as well. There's no process currently that requires regular annual reviews for efficiency and accountability. We get a lot of pushback on requiring that for various public agencies, but we ought to do it across the board. And legislators have a responsibility to, you know, to demand of taxpayers, or that taxpayers are receiving the most value for their dollars. This you have talked about in Heard Express. That whole pie there is the pie of total potential tax revenues. By that, if you just applied each tax we have and laid it out there, that would be the total tax revenue that the state would receive. If you look at the gold shape, what that is, is the tax revenue we are not receiving because we give credits, exemptions, and so on of various kinds. Some of those we know as personal exemptions and the income tax, no tax on food and prescription drugs, et cetera, et cetera. Others of them we know less well. They have to do with whether you buy a sandwich from a vending machine, should it be taxed like a sandwich you'd buy in a restaurant? And in this case, the vending machine sandwich doesn't get a tax applied. At a restaurant, it does. There are a lot of different ones that, again, there isn't an ongoing review process. Look at what's happened. This traits a, what's happened, the red line on the top there, that becomes on the top at the end, shows you the growth in the exemptions to the taxes compared to what's happened to the actual revenues that we do, we generate. So that gap continues to grow, and now that one of the easiest bills to pass in the Michigan Legislature is another tax expenditure. The question is, are they working? Well, this suggests if those tax expenditures are primarily for the focus and purpose, many of them, of trying to help in terms of building the economic climate and jobs, this charts what's happened to jobs over that period of time and suggests those 500 million jobs I talked about that we've lost since 2000, we've lost in spite of the fact that what we have seen is that constant reduction of tax liability. I asked Treasury the other day if they could tell me, compare how many businesses in Michigan pay no single tax liability when we had the single business tax. And they said it was somewhere in the vicinity of 60% of Michigan businesses had no SBT liability. Under the changes now into the MBT, they estimated, they're still getting first-year numbers and so on, so they don't have good numbers on that. But because of the nature of the MBT, that that will be closer to 70% now of Michigan businesses with no MBT liability. So, you know, again, through the various exemptions, credits, and so on. The question is, not should we have them, but are they working? And what's the process that's going to be used? The legislature, through one house or the other, has, over the past several years, has passed with bipartisan support, but never all three at the same time, the two houses and the governor. Something like $400 million worth of loophole closings that they've been able to close. If, as we propose, we were to expand the sales tax on services, Michigan taxes 26 of 164 identified services. We're 38th in the United States for that. Other Midwest states tax 51 services on average. Expansion, if it was a pretty broad-based expansion, excluding healthcare, excluding business-to-business, excluding nonprofits, the Michigan League for Human Services came up with $1.6 billion with future growth, if we taxed them at 6%. One of the problems that we have with the current sales tax expansion proposal, we think the expansion makes sense given the nature of the economy, but to say we're going to expand the base, lower the rate, eliminate the MBT surcharge, and part of the grocery receipts tax, we don't wind up with the additional revenues and, down the pike, the additional revenues that one would hope to generate. I also would argue, but this is off the record now, never say publicly, that it doesn't make sense if we're in a political setting, and sometimes we are, that we would say, "Let's expand," here's kind of my bottom line, you know, "We'll expand, but we'll reduce, and we'll give you this." It sounds like negotiating with ourselves. And somebody told me that doesn't make sense. The, you know, that we really need to explore the different options and not say, "This is the way it has to be, or will be, if we're going to get, I think, the best discussion on tax change." We've proposed, and I think you've spoken, or had speak with you, Charlie Ballard from MSU, and we've worked with him as we've developed a proposal for implementing the graduated income tax. We see a number of reasons for doing that. Keep in mind that our current flat-rate tax, currently at 4.3%, is scheduled to start dropping off. That's what you call continuing a structural deficit, when we lay out the revenues we need and then find out ways to reduce those. The flat-rate tax represents a greater share of disposable income for low and middle-income We have put together a proposal in which 90% of taxpayers would see a tax cut that would generate $600 million in new revenues. There's no magic to those numbers, except depending on the rates you establish in a graduated tax, you can protect whatever percentage you want and generate whatever additional revenues, depending on what those are. But it would be with pretty much 90% of current tax filers paying less than they see now, you know, we could generate a $600 million in new revenue. The income in the richest households has grown five times faster than those in the, what kind of, it's like not everyone is suffering in the present economic situation. The bottom 20% of wage earners saw household incomes grow by about 9% between the mid-'80s and the mid-2000s. The top 5%, I'm talking about over 120,000 of the wealthiest households in Michigan, enjoyed a 48% increase. So this means their income grew five times larger, faster, and this doesn't count capital gains. Professor Ballard offers, and I think has with you, a more analysis of these figures, but I think they're important to review, who is, in fact, affected by and how by the state tax system. We did some polling, and I wanted to lay that out for you as well. As, let me, under, people were asked how they would characterize, if they would see the budget situation is in a crisis. And as you can see, a substantial number of people do see that. Then they were asked whether they felt the impact of budget cuts. And you can see that, and there are different polling firms who have done these figures at different times. We ask the question, would you support a balanced approach to addressing the state's fiscal crisis, or a cuts-only approach, or an income, or increase in taxes only? And you can see the overwhelming support is, except in the poll that we did, is for the balanced approach, an approach that had cuts as well as revenue changes, tax increases. The graduated income tax, now, this is, this talks about accountability and transparency, the public support for audits is one of our proposals. Overwhelming support for that. We ask, what do you feel, how do you feel about the loophole closings, you know, looking at the tax expenditures? 77% said yes. We asked about support for graduated income tax in all of those polls, those three polls. Graduated tax scores six to seven points higher if you address it as a tax cut for 90% of families. So I'm acknowledging that there's something in the way you ask a question to be considered. The sales tax expansion tests better when asked if it should be expanded to services and luxury items, if you say just services, if you say services and luxury items. The support for the sales tax expansion is here, and it ranges in the 40% up to 49%. And then that's who we are. The, what we're trying to do in this whole process is focus a debate around the assumptions we have within a specific proposal, and we're hoping to build support for that. And as I say, the, our sense is that the broader the base of those of us who are raising the questions and laying out answers, the more sense, the more sense it makes, the more likelihood we can get attention from policymakers.
Excellent. Thank you, Lynn.
Hello.
Hey, it's the famous Kathleen.
What a wonderful day.
Reggie filled us in that the ceremony was proper, and we're all proud of you, Kath, so glad you were able to.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you.
And we just, we have, we've heard from Mike Adenizio, Tom White, and we just concluded with Lynn, and there have been questions after each one, and we're going to bring those to Lynn now. It starts with Cassandra, please.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the very informative information. And I, first of all, just want to say that I appreciate the fact that you guys are looking at the graduated income tax, because even though the politics of getting that through are much more difficult, I think it makes a lot of sense for us to take a look at that and see, you know, what the impact can be on the state with a change like that. My question is, going back to one of the graphs that you had, and this was about how the sales tax impacts various educational levels, and various income levels. Do you see, and I don't, I'm missing it.
It's, uh.
Sheriff family income.
It's toward the front. It's number six if, no, it's not. It's number four.
Yes. If the state were to move towards, you know, a service tax or a sales tax on services and luxury items, do you see this perpetuating what we see here, or do you see it leveling it out because the luxury items, if you will, are going to be used by those with more disposable income as opposed to those with less?
The, it's dangerous to assume that a sales tax, a shift to sales tax, can be more progressive. That is, can be applied without having a more negative impact on lower income. However, it certainly can be fashioned in a manner that does build in progressivity. And it would be important, I think, as we carry on the debate about that expansion, to be sensitive to the low and middle-income populations. And the story of the sales tax is that there are a lot of services that, well, financial management, many legal services, you have a variety of services that, entertainment and so on, that are more likely to have a greater impact on a higher-spending, wealthier people. But it can, it can be problematic if it's not fashioned, problematic from my perspective if it's not progressive, if it isn't fashioned correctly.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, please.
Thanks, Lynn. I hadn't seen that juxtaposition of the increasing tax exemptions with the revenue loss before. You may not know the answer, but is there, is there any one or two or three things driving that? Or is it a lot of big things or just a lot of little things that we built into the tax code over the last 10 or 15 years that are taking a lot of money out of the equation?
There are both big and little ones. In the last few years, of course, the big ones, as you would expect, are things like the personal exemption.
Expanded personal exemptions.
Yeah, sales tax on food and drugs, you know, those kinds of things. The ones more recently, well, I should put in a commercial here, not for myself. The Michigan Education Association hired Patrick Anderson and his team to do a look at tax expenditures. Their first report, I can't remember whether Patrick, I was here, but I can't remember if he mentioned that when he was here.
But it wasn't out yet, I don't.
He talked about they're not really, you know, being able to identify all of them and so on, and what their impact is. They're to have within two or three weeks a second chapter that they're putting out that begin to look at and evaluate some of those. The one he was critical of, I think, when he was here, which is one that grew quite a bit, was the film credit, which, if I recall correctly, he said was paying $50,000 a year for a job. Why, the credit wasn't, we were, in that instance. But I think it is a combination, but watch for that. In fact, you might want to be sure you get a copy of that when that comes out. There is a publication that Treasury does annually that is a tax expenditure report, and it lists every tax expenditure and what it translates to.
I'm sure Charlie Ballard was waving around, too.
It could well have been. It's a pretty good-sized document, and CIC, Citizens Research Council, does an outline of that kind, too.
That was Ballard's reading for pleasure, by the way.
That's right.
Liz, please.
Yeah. You know, your slide on the third page about state government is smaller.
Yeah.
And it is true that we have fewer state employees, but many of those functions are still being done, and they're being done in sort of a hidden middle level. And I know the one point in time I had all the budgets and I did a spreadsheet on what the costs were of the community mental health authority.
Yes.
Which manage 94 core provider contracts, but they're not, they're kind of like offline, so you don't know what the salaries are. And the salaries in those contract management levels are really huge, and they're not accountable to the county commissioners anymore either. So there's really no way, place for the public to take a good look. And I don't think they realize, you know, the kinds of money that's being spent where I had proposed early in this administration that they put a contract monitoring and compliance unit at in-state government with 19 people and pay them well, and you could manage 94 contracts. And we would know what it costs, and we would save. When I did the budget, because I had a spreadsheet, it was a net savings of $100 million. That was in 2002. So I can't tell you what the net savings would be today. I don't have the data. But I think that there are functions of government that could have been or could be at state government. I understand, no one wants lots of state employees. That's like an unpopular thing.
Not with me.
But if the public understood that civil service has a, you know, there's kind of a grip on pay schedules when they're employed at the state level, and there's no grip. When people are making over $300,000 to manage six contracts, I want the job.
Yeah. Good luck.
But, you know, it's just something that is hidden in there, and I don't really know how to go about, you know, putting it out for, but I didn't know, maybe your studies are looking at those middle levels.
Well, one of the challenges, I think, is the, how much we are spending and are we getting our value on those? As you look at budgets, from the policymaker perspective, the easiest thing to do, and it's always the least responsible, is to say, we got, we're this much over budget, we've got to cut X percent. You figure out how to do it. But we don't even do that with the tax expenditures and those contracts, because if we said we have to cut state budget by 10%, then why don't we say, and therefore, we have to cut the tax expenditures by 10%? Or we have to cut the contracts by 10%? Whatever. If our goal is just budget cuts, the problem with that is, that's just carrying the irresponsibility of the cuts in one area across to others. A more responsible way would be to review what it is we're doing. Then a couple of things come out in transparency. One is, the question, you might get some resolution to the question of, is this something we really want to do? I didn't know we did that. Why do we do that? You know, is it, does it pay off in terms of jobs? Does it pay off in terms of economic activity? So, you know, at least for starters, it would help to, in each of those areas, to develop a process for that kind of review, so that we begin, I've proposed that we have, actually went back to a 1991 report, bipartisan House Committee of Appropriations and Taxation that reported to the Speaker at that time, that we ought to set up, and we outlined what were the questions you should ask about every tax expenditure and proposal and so on, and how could we do that? I think that's very timely still today.
Yeah, yeah. Blue cover.
Yeah.
Fascinating. Nancy, please, and then anyone who might be on the phone that would like their hand up.
On your, let's see, it'll be your fourth slide here on the sheriff family income paid in taxes.
Yes.
I was really intrigued with that, and I was wondering, do you know if there's another one of those that has a fourth bar that would include the federal income tax line? I'm assuming this, when you say income tax here, the state.
Yes, that's correct.
And so, do you know if there's another one that we, because I think that would be really informative to have that federal piece in there as well, to really get a clear picture.
I'm sure that's available. I haven't seen it now, and I don't know the, you know, how it would break out, but I'm sure it's available.
I'd be interested.
The property tax, of course, is, there's very little of that activity, property and sales. There are other kind of consumption taxes, so we'd really need to figure out, you know, which, but there are charts and graphs in terms of tax burden overall in the United States and so on.
Well, I was just thinking, if we were looking at that as something that we'd like to or not.
Yes.
Recommend, that it would be helpful if we knew what the federal burden then was as well. It would give us a clearer picture as we move forward, what that might then entail in a flat or a graduated or whatever.
Right.
Because the federal is, wouldn't you call that more of a graduated?
Yes, it is. And what we do, for example, and a property tax or income tax, for those who deduct, a state or local tax is deductible on their federal taxes, whereas a sales tax is not, unless you bought your car in December like I did. And, you know, but the, so those interrelationships are important.
Well, as we're going to go forward and make some recommendations, I guess I'd just like to have a clearer picture.
Okay.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Kath, Mary, Kath or Mary, Ann or Reggie?
My name is, this is Kath.
Yes, Kath, please.
I think Bob Thomas has introduced something that would cut the tax expenditures by 1% across the board, I think. Have you seen that, or what would you think of such a thing?
I haven't seen, I've heard the proposal. I haven't, I haven't seen Kathleen, his specific proposal. The, conceptually, it's attractive, but again, it goes back to, that's a pretty nondiscriminatory way to do it. And do you want to say, we want to cut 1% of every tax expenditure? Do you want to cut 1% of the, you know, the personal exemption of the income tax, the sales tax on prescription drugs and so on? In terms of budget balancing, you know, it makes sense to do that kind of thing. In terms of what I would prefer to see in a sensitive discriminatory, if I can use those two words together, policy, you know, I'd rather, I'd rather pick and choose.
Thank you.
Any other questions for?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Mary Ann, please.
Thank you so much for coming and going over all of this. It's good to have this all in one spot. I get little bits and pieces of this information and never all together like this. I may have missed this when you were giving the information on the polling you had done, but I just feel it was in this polling for any particular tax over another. For instance, was there a point that people wanted tax on services more than a graduated Raising the Michigan business tax over a graduated income tax, do you think there's any of that?
We didn't do it, Mary Ann, and I'm not, I'm not sure, I will do some homework, I'm not sure whether others have done that, that polling to compare, you know, which tax do you prefer? We did ask, or there was polling on the level of support for a graduated income tax, in which we found significant support, and that support, even just as proposed as a graduated income tax, had support, even more support if you also said a graduated income tax, that provides a lower tax for 90% of taxpayers. But the, so a lot depends on how, well, the campaign and how that would be spelled out. But I will look for some polling information on comparing the different taxes. One of the difficulties, of course, is that the tax system is so complex and interrelated. If we went around this table, each one of us would be taxed substantially different, differently, different, in different ways.
It wouldn't be the same.
It wouldn't be the same. There's got to be a teacher here that would. The, I'm going to come out. The, I'm going to come out, you know, golden on the Michigan income tax, because I've got about five pensions working, and on that income, I don't pay income tax. Michigan has the most generous of any state tax policy for old people like me. And, you know, so they really do, so if you ask me about the business tax, you know, I say, I don't care. You know, it's, just don't screw with my exemptions on the income tax, you know? So it really, it really will be hard to get that kind of information, but let's, let me look and see what I can find that might be helpful.
Oh, thank you.
We also know you well enough, you'd be happy to pay some taxes on that.
Well, I would, I would. I haven't, now, I read the other day that the Supreme Court Justice who said taxes are the test of a civilized society, Alvin Wendell Holmes, am I right?
Alvin Wendell Holmes said that.
Yes, and he also, upon his death, gave his estate to the public. So, you know, I guess I'm free to do that if I.
Good idea.
Anything else for Lynn?
Thank you.
Well, thanks so much, Lynn.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent presentation, a lot of good insights from both you and Mike and Tom. We much appreciate it. The board's going to.
My name is just.
Yes, Kath?
Just say something.
Sure.
I just want to thank Lynn and apologize for not being there on purpose, but I totally appreciate you being there, Lynn, and thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Mike's still here, Tom just had to leave, but we did share your regrets, but understood, Kathy, you were getting a great honor, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and I totally appreciate the work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we have this all on tape that would be available to you, Kath, for the other presentations, so we'll make that avail, I mean, it'll make that available.
Mm-hmm.
Well, great, and this is, in addition, then, at our March meeting, we'll have some more to ponder and go from there. And so let's move on to our next item, which is public participation. We do have one, one request, or one.
Yes, Mary Wood is here today, from Warren. Mary, I know you know the routine, five minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Mary T. Wood. I live at 27533 Santa Ana in Warren, Michigan. I wanted to take the opportunity to talk to everybody here particularly about this issue. Since we're looking at the dire states that the local school districts are in, we, I don't feel that we can have conversation about that without looking in-house, and the responsibility that the Department of Education has in the distribution of state aid money to charter schools and the accountability of that money. So I'd just like to raise a few issues here, because I think that we look at where the money is going, some of our districts are hurting terribly because of loss of students to these schools that, as you well know, I have taken a very strong stand from the very get-go, have opened illegally, and oftentimes have operated illegally through the years with the use of this money. I did come across the article from the Attorney General's Office for January 28th, where the Attorney General is pressing charges against an individual from a traditional school district for fraudulent claims of student count and money that was brought into the district there. Mr. Cox quotes here in the article, "This case is especially troubling for neighborhood schools which are playing by the rules while getting hit by budget cuts." I'd just like to transfer that to my feelings that I have about the charter schools. When our neighborhood schools are playing by the rules and we have charter schools that are not, then these issues need to be taken, looked at seriously. When I came to this board before about Crescent Academy and the sale of their building, this goes back several years ago, it was addressed by Jim Gunner in a letter to you, Superintendent, that there was contact with the Attorney General's Office to see if there would be any follow-up prosecution to certain individuals that were involved. I did come to find out that that statement, there was nothing supporting it at the AG's office, that they had anything on record, that there was a contact made by CMU to have that looked into. I find this disturbing, because just recently, I did come across the article, well, it's a document submitted by entities that were involved with that bond, when it had to be unwound and then redone for the appropriate amount of money, the sale of that building when the original bond was for five million dollars, the actual estimated cost of the building was only three point two million dollars. Well, there was a distribution of the money out early on, and then apparently there needed to be a recovery back of the money, so there's lawsuits being pressed now to individuals of Helicon and other various entities, and I find through this document, which I, you know, I had to use my magnifying glass to read through it, because it's printed out as in microscopic print, but there is a lot more involved in this situation than what CMU and Bay Mills was able to reveal in their investigation, and there's many, there's several more key individuals that were involved in conflicts of interest in here. What concerns me is that in, going back to CMU's report, which was the Dr. Drew, Charles Drew Academy, it was not stated in there that they should unwind the sale of their building for five million dollars. In this report, it does say that the purchase of the Drew Building, which had the same similarities as the Crescent Academy Building, that the issuance, that the sale of the building and the issuance of bonds did violate Michigan law, but it was not asked that they would unwind that bond purchase, which was, these are two separate entities, if you follow my drift. Well, in going in and doing my Google search, I now find out that the properties of the Drew Building is in forfeiture. Now, this is apparently buildings that we bought as taxpayers through bonds, and it's up for forfeiture, so got some red flags going on here. I want to raise to your attention that there is roughly seven hundred and twenty million state aid dollars going to public school academies.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Prior to this, this was money that would have gone to our traditional districts. Much of this money is going into real estate of these new schools. While our districts are shutting down schools in order to save whatever they can to operate their districts, we have money that would normally be classroom dollars that is going into buildings. So when we got management companies that had been involved, and we had, what I brought forward to you here, a significant violation of the law, conflicts of interest, nothing further had happened to look into the rest of the schools that this particular company had been operating. And I think this board and this department needs to do due diligence to look further into why that did not happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Part of the meeting, any comments by state board members in general?
I don't think so.
Okay. On that count, by the way, I don't want to miss the opportunity to thank, thank board members, I know John and I think it's an answer, at least are going tomorrow, others are certainly welcome, and on the point just raised, there's also some requests in our budget to beef up the charter school office, because I do think we need a little greater capacity to be able to do some of the oversight, particularly with the way the new reform laws have come into play. So we're hoping to, we felt good about winning their support today on the reform office, restructure office, whatever we end up calling it, and we hope to gain that same thing tomorrow. So timely comment in one sense. And our next meeting is March 9th, and I guess we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.